Well, good evening. I am Vice Mayor Eddie Cook. Unfortunately, Mayor Daniels will not be with us tonight, so I am going to step in her shoes. So she expresses her sadness that she cannot be with the kids. This is her most favorite event that we do here in the council, and she had another assignment tonight. So she sends her love and kindness to all of you and to all of the teachers and administrators with that. So we celebrate our youth at this meeting, and again, for us council members, we're very thrilled. With that, we have a wonderful team on the council. And as Mayor Lewis, excuse me, Mayor Daniels would say, it's a team effort. So I'd like to introduce some of my colleagues, because they love this event as well. So we have Councilmember Jordan Ray, Councilmember Bridget Peterson, Councilmember Jared Taylor, Councilmember Amy Yentes, and Councilmember Scott Anderson. We also have some wonderful folks here tonight that are your teachers. And your teachers and administrators are the ones that I believe may have nominated all these wonderful kids to accept this award. So, we would like to thank those teachers and administrators. If you can all please stand, so that we can recognize and thank you for your service. What makes this happen are our wonderful Gilbert businesses and sponsors of this event. So as you see here on the big screen, Sal's Gilbert Pizza and Culinary Dropout. They are so wonderful partners for the town, and they help provide a lot of the cost for this. And we ask you to please visit these two fine businesses, because they do so well for us in committee. What we also do is, all the teachers that made a submission to any, all the kids, we have your name in this little can here. And there is actually a prize that we give out. And we need someone to help pull a name out of the hat. And I see this young lady here. Would you like to help? Why don't you come over here? And what is your name?
Joy.
Joy, what a beautiful name. Have a round of applause for Joy. All right, Joy. We have a name in here, and I'd like you to reach into this little can and pull a little piece of paper out. Just one piece of paper. Oh, that looks great. And I may need Bridget to help me pronounce this, but...
Mrs. Louvo.
Mrs. Louvo from Edupr- Louvio? Are you here? Well, come up. We have, you have... Louvi? Joy, thank you very much. Yeah, we think, yeah, we think it's a lot, a lot of cash in here. So anyways, thank you for serving our community with our kids very much. And what grade do you teach?
First grade.
Well, thank you. And we love Eduprize as well as... There she is, look at that. Well, thank you very much. We try to do this with a lot of organization, and we do this evening in three groups. So, Group A or Group One are all the elementary that starts with the letter A to the letter J. If we can have all those kids stand up and come to the front, Councilmember Ray will help you. And if you can come up... Oh, the schools, you have elementary schools from the letter A.
Ashland Ranch to Islands Elementary.
Yes. From Ashland Ranch to Islands. If you come up, you're part of Group One. We do have a photographer that will take pictures, so we can have Monica stand up. She will take a picture, because the kids will get an award. They can stand next to me and will take a picture. And if parents, if you would like to come up to the front to take a picture as well, please come on down. You can sit here in the front if you like.
Next group, next group, next group.
Yeah. Yeah, so schools from Ashland Ranch to the Islands, A through I or J. With that, we're gonna have Councilmember Peterson read your name, and we're gonna enjoy a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cook. The first one is Ashland Ranch Elementary, Alexander Zhang. Got it? Good. Next is Bridges Elementary, Wyatt Keltoner. Turn the, yeah, there we go. Turn the plaque around. Good job. Burke Elementary, Rhett Lewis. No Rhett? Carroll Ray Ranch, Mallory Hobbs. Chandler Traditional Academy, Mackenzie Laser. Big smile. Good job. Charlotte Patterson Elementary, Addison Potter. Behind me, oh! Right up here! We don't wanna miss you. Right over here, Addison, there you go. Christ Greenfield Lutheran, Marie Torrey. Looking around, just in case. Coronado Elementary, Mara Coyma. Did I say it correctly? Mara? I did it just like the pronunciation showed. Can you tell us me? Coyma. Coyma. Mara Coyma. Eduprize School, Annalise Johnson. I love her little dress. There you go. Perfect. No relatives? Gateway Point. Gateway Point Elementary, Julia Ray. Gilbert Elementary, Olivia Romans. Highland Park Elementary, Tristan Hibbs. Higley Traditional Academy, Kezia Narco. Did I do well? Lay down. And Houston Elementary, Macy Welsh.
Let's have a round of applause for Group One. All right, kids, you can go back. We know that this is a school night, and there's probably homework. So for those families in Group One, you have our permission to go home and leave some room for the other groups to have your seat. But again, thank you for having wonderful, wonderful kids. Yeah, we like that, making that call. But congratulations to Group One. Group Two. For those elementary kids that are in schools that have, from K through Z, that is from...
Mesquite Elementary through Weinberg Elementary.
Please come on down. Please come on down, and Councilmember Ray will get you organized back here. So again... And for those parents that are standing, there's plenty of open seats. You're more than welcome to come on down and take those seats. And again, for those parents, if you wanna take a picture, you're more than welcome to come down here in the front. We will, we do have our professional photographer, Monica. And these pictures will be posted on our town website.
And on Facebook.
And our Facebook.
On Facebook and our Flickr account.
And our Flickr account, yes.
Good thing I'm paying attention to you, Vice Mayor. Okay, Group Two. Mesquite Elementary, Anna Zaring. Oak Tree Elementary, Enoch Gurr. Great job. Mayor Daniels always says, "Smile with teeth, Enoch." Patterson Elementary, Kayden Anderson. Pioneer Elementary, Sophia Hunt. Playa del Rey Elementary, Kaylee Busher. Power Ranch Elementary, Natalie Weiss. Quartz Hill Elementary, Arianna Davis. Riggs Elementary, Sailor Mayer. Oh, look at the boots, matching boots. Santan Elementary, Marley Lizdell. Settlers Point Elementary, Liam Cabot. Liam, there you go. Sonoma Ranch Elementary, Michael Shapiro Jr. Oh, he's been to altitude. Yeah.
It's, it's hard.
Spectrum Elementary, Savannah Nitzel. Savannah, is it Nitzel or Nitzel? Nitzel. Thank you. Town Meadows Elementary, Janie Brower. Valvista Lakes Elementary, Emma Franklin. And Weinberg Elementary, Peyton Cormos. That's it.
And that's Group Two. We'll take a picture. And parents, if you'd like to come down and take a picture of the group. Let's have a round of applause for Group Two. And to those parents, as we know, this is a school night. Please, you may leave and take your child back home. And that'll leave some more room for some parents to have these seats. With that, Group Three, all the junior highs and all the high school students, can you please come up to the front? And Councilmember Ray will organize you. Again, any student from junior high to high school, please come to the front of the council chamber, and Councilmember Ray will organize you.
Ready?
I think we're ready.
Got it. Kemp Overity High School, Alexander Martin. Right there. There we go. Right over here. It's perfect. Perfect. Canyon Valley High School, Gabrielle Ortiz. Cooley Middle School, Prince Melman. Gilbert Classical Academy, Lindsay Vega. Greenfield Junior High, Junior High, Desiree Ariano. Higley High School, Sierra Nicole Fratella. Leading Edge Gilbert Early College, Ivan Cabrera. Leading Edge Gilbert Early College, Christian Garvin. That's some great hair, Christian. That's great hair. That's why you're a hair now. Legacy Traditional School, Gilbert Everett Giddens. Mesquite Junior High, Aleah Di Giuseppe. Did I do it? Did I get it right? It's a competition between the Vice Mayor and I. Thank you. Mesquite Junior High School, Jake Gorrell. Payne Junior High, Ava McIntosh. Perry High School, Lexi Foster. Sausman Middle School, Julia Cavarlo. And South Valley Junior High, Cameron Colvin. No Cameron.
All right, we're gonna do a picture of the junior high and high school. And the parents, you can come up to the front, take a picture. Let's have a round of applause for Group Three, the junior highs and high school. Well, thank you for all attending. We love this event with the kids. And again, thank you to the teachers and administrators for making Gilbert schools the best in the state of Arizona. Thank you. We will begin our council meeting at 7 o'clock. If you'd like to stay and enjoy a really exciting meeting, you're more than welcome to stay.
Trying to get the presentation ready for you guys.
Yeah, yeah, Scott with green light.
I just lost the mouse.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
Well, good evening. Welcome to the... Our council meeting for November 11th. Excuse me, November 7th. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We would like to begin with our scouts. And we'll have Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You remembered my name this time. Just kidding. We're not... I'm not gonna let you leave that down. Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have a group of scouts here, and one of them is going to leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance first, and his name is Quinn. If we could all rise for that.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'd like to pass the mic along to these lovely young gentlemen and have them introduce themselves and maybe give us your troop number.
Jonathan Samuelson, Assistant Scout Master for Troop 83.
I'm John. I forgot. I'm John Sherman, First Class of Class of Troop 83.
I'm John Miller, and I'm a Life Scout of Troop 83.
I'm Quinn Phelps, and I'm a Life Scout from Troop 83.
I'm Jerem Hall, and I'm a Scout of Troop 83.
I'm Jacob Taylor, and I'm a Scout of 125.
And not related to our Councilmember Taylor? No. There you go. So these gentlemen, I handed them each a pocket-sized version of our Constitution for them to go home and study so that they know all the great things that they need to know about this great land that we live in. And thank them for coming out tonight. Vice Mayor, do you have any final words for these gentlemen?
Well, we thank you for your journey as a scout. And we'd like you to study that pocket Constitution. So when you come back next time, we'll give you a test. How about that? Again, thank you. Round of applause for our scouts. Our invocation will be led by Pastor Rick from Sunrise Assembly of God Church. It's a great honor to have you back, Pastor Rick.
Let's pray together. Father God, we pause this evening just to give you thanks. Thanks for your many blessings. Thanks for the opportunity we have to live in this great community. We can live, work, and play. We pray for those who have served and those who are currently serving in the military. We pray a special blessing upon their families. We pray, Father, for this council and the staff that you will continue to give them insight and wisdom as they make decisions that will impact this community to continue to be great. We ask that your protection would be around the first responders of our community, police, fire, EMS, and that their families will know your protection as well. Father, we ask tonight that in this meeting and in this community that your will would be done in Gilbert as it is in heaven. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Rick. If I can have the clerk, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jen Daniels. Vice Mayor Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Amy Yentes.
Here.
Of course, Mr. President.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a proclamation that Councilmember Scott Anderson will lead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, as a family-oriented community, there are many, many traditions in Gilbert. But there's probably no tradition that is bigger than Gilbert Days, which we celebrate every year. I think it was to celebrate either the first traffic light or the first paved street. Remember which one? First paved street in Gilbert. And it's been a wonderful tradition ever since. And tonight, we're here to celebrate that tradition by again proclaiming the week of November 15 through the 24th as Gilbert Days. And I'd like to have several people join me up here who are responsible for putting this all together, whom we extend our gratitude to for all the efforts that they put. We'd like to ask Paige Nelson, who's the Secretary of the Gilbert Promotional Corporation. Is she here? She's not here. President Bobby Padilla. Come on up, Bobby. Vice President Ed Musgraves. Are your board members here? Kathy. Kim Graziano and Josh Solinsky. Josh is not here. And our 2019 Rodeo Queen, Tatum Lance. As I said, these people put together a great deal of effort in putting on our Gilbert Days. There's the parade and all the other things that happened during Gilbert Days celebration. And I'm gonna ask them to go down the line, introduce yourselves and anything you'd like to say about the event coming up.
Hi, I'm Tatum Lance. I'm a 2019 Queen for Gilbert Days. I just wanted to welcome you guys. I'm so excited that you're here, and I'm so excited that Gilbert Days is right around the corner. I am very excited about this rodeo because I've been there since I was about one years old. I started in Little Dudes and then on and on. So, and our rodeo is gonna be November 22nd through the 24th.
Thank you, Tatum. Yeah, I'm pretty pleased to have this little girl up here with us. She was raised here in Gilbert. I'm a native, and I'm glad to be here, you guys, and thanks for the proclamation. I'm Bobby Padilla.
Ed Musgraves, Vice President. And I'd like to invite you all to the rodeo this... in two weeks, the 22nd through the 24th.
Hi, my name's Kathy Padilla, and I'm a board member.
Hi, I'm Kim Graziano, and I'm a board member.
Thank you so much for all that you do. Let me quickly read this proclamation. Whereas the Gilbert Promotional Corporation has actively promoted Gilbert, Arizona, through the annual celebration of Gilbert Days for many years. And whereas this event has become an occasion enjoyed not only by the residents of Gilbert, but by citizens from around the state of Arizona and visitors to Arizona. And whereas the Gilbert Days celebration provides entertainment for spectators as well as participants in a week-long celebration of Western festivities, the official opening will begin November 15th with the Pony Express 100-mile ride. Now therefore, I, Jen Daniels, Mayor of the town of Gilbert, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of November 15 through the 24th, 2019, as Gilbert Days. Let's give them all a round of applause for their efforts. Vice Mayor, would you like to say anything? He's good. Let's have some photos then.
Councilmember Yentes will lead us in our next recognition.
I'd like to invite Zoe Johnson to come join me down here. Do we have Zoe? On behalf of the mayor and the council, very pleased to present this certificate of achievement to you. And I just wanna say also, I'm a Wildcat, graduate from Skye High School, so this is a distinct pleasure. Zoe was selected to travel to London, England, in December to participate in the 2019 Varsity All-American London Tour. You're a senior, so you'll be graduating this year as well, and is one of more than 800 high school cheerleaders from across the country who will be representing varsity spirit in the world-famous London's New Year's Day Parade. It's an amazing accomplishment. All Americans are chosen based on superior athletic and leadership skills. And get this, only the top 12% of athletes who attend camp earn the chance to perform in the holiday spectacular. We're so proud of you, Zoe. And do you have... what are you most excited about traveling to London this year?
I'm excited because it's a great experience. And I'm a three-time All-American, so this is my last year, and so I get to go on the trip and represent Gilbert, and I'm so excited.
That's awesome. Maybe you can create a special Gilbert cheer for all of us council members to open up all our meetings with. I'm sure Eddie would be really good at that. Thank you, Zoe. We're so proud of you.
Our next presentation is from our Sister Cities program. And if we can have Mr. Greg Tilke. Are you gonna do a presentation here?
Yep.
Okay.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Cook, members of the council. I'm Greg Tilke, President of Gilbert Sister Cities, and happy to be here tonight. Give you a brief overview of a recent trip we took to our... one of our sister cities in Lashawn, China. And also to present a gift, what I've done, to the Vice Mayor and our council liaison, Bridgette Peterson, that way I received while I was there. First, I want to thank Councilmember Peterson for all of her dedicated support for our Sister Cities program as council liaison. She's been great to work with for the last few years, or a couple of years, I think it's been. And then also, if you're not aware, Councilwoman Yentes was a student exchange... one of our student exchange ambassadors. I can't remember the year, but it was a few years back. And glad to have you get on that trip. So Kathy and I, along with our board member, Tim Smith, went to Lashawn for their sixth Szechuan International Travel Expo. And back in 2015, Councilwoman Peterson went along with then-Mayor Lewis. We had a delegation that went, so that... It's really grown a lot since that time. And as... they were hosting 17 different countries... or delegations from 15 countries. And of course, being a tourism expo, we had to go see some tourist sites. This one happened to be the Chengdu Panda Base in Chengdu, China, which is about an hour and a half from Lashawn. And it was... it's also Phoenix's sister city. As you can see, they had some baby pandas that were born a few months before we got there. We also visited in Lashawn two of their big tourism points. One, the giant Buddha you see on the left. They recently started when Councilmember Peterson was there. They didn't have it lighted at night. Now they've got tours at night and boat tours and really... But it's the largest stone Buddha... standing stone Buddha in the world at 232 feet. And it took 90 years to build back in 703. So it's been quite a bit. And then we also went to Mount Ermeh, which you see on the top right. And that was... that's the Golden Summit that people love to go to. We also got to go to Lashawn One Mind Service Center. This is a unique place. It's kinda like your 311 program on steroids. They had a problem where they had 50-plus numbers... phone numbers for people to call, and people never knew which number to call, so they confined it into one, 12345, so people can call. And it serves tourists as well as citizens. It's well-staffed, and they're taking care of problems from everything you can imagine. We also, as part of the delegation at a time, threw some one-on-one with some of their leaders. And this is Chairman Chu. And he presented a gift, which I'll present to you in a few minutes. And we had some good time with him to talk about exchanges and how we can work things more in the future. The welcome dinner, you can see from the half-table picture on the left there, we have a big group. That was just for the dignitaries. There's a bunch of other people in the crowd. In the middle is Mayor Smith from our other sister city in Antrim Newton Abbey and Northern Ireland. And he presented a talk about partnerships and how we can all work together, and then some of the ceremony. We were really excited. The highlight of the trip was that we had a delegation of five members from Antrim Newton Abbey, including the mayor, councilors Vera McWilliam, who's been here before a few times. Last time they were here, Councilmember Philip Brett and Mark Cooper is new in the council, and then Craig Mull and their staff. So we had a great time to dialogue. And what we've talked about for years is doing a three-way partnership between all three of our communities. This year, thanks to Craig, last year when he came out, I talked to him about it, and he kinda moved the thing forward. And so they signed a letter of intent at this event. And we plan to, when they get the full council approval, we plan to talk about some opportunities. I think there's a lot of opportunities out there for not only tourism between the communities, but also some business opportunities. So we're gonna look at that as that moves forward. And then lastly, in the past, we've spoke about... I think a couple of years ago, Patrick will recall, we had Lashawn came and said we would like to do a Sister Cities garden. We've talked about it. So I've got a bunch of pictures and a list for Patrick to give him on the types of plants that were... the vegetation that was growing in Lashawn that would survive our summers here. And it was pretty impressive. The number of plants available, I think we'll have a good opportunity to have a nice garden. So I'll pass those on to Patrick. Finally, Shishi, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for your continued support of Gilbert Sister Cities. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Greg. I love being your liaison to Gilbert Sister Cities. And Councilmember Taylor just asked me if that was a new logo. And I said, yes, it is, and it's beautiful, isn't it? And I think that it really displays much better the connections that we're trying to make around the world with the Gilbert Sister Cities program, especially the work that you just did in China. that you just did in China, bringing Antrim Newton Abbey there and creating that, hopefully, three-way possibility of a three-way joint membership or group together. I love that idea, and thank you for all you do.
You're very welcome. Any other questions, comments?
And I think we're thinking of our trip to our friendly community of Ireland in April. Is that the right thing?
April is what we're looking at, right.
Well, we look forward to that as well.
So do we. So if I could ask Vice Mayor Cook and Councilwoman Peterson to come down, and I'll present the gift that was given to me to pass on to you.
Let us move now to the communication from citizens. Councilmember Ray, do we have anyone that would like to address the council?
We do not.
With that, let us move now to the consent calendar. Councilmember Ray, were there any council members that wanted to pull?
Vice Mayor Cook, we are going to pull item 11, so with that, I'm ready to make a motion. Are you okay with that?
Yes, I'd like to take a motion.
Move that we approve items four, five, six, seven, eight A and B, nine, 10 A and B, 12 A and B, 13, 14 A and B, 15 A and B, 16, 17, 18 A and B, 19, 20, and 21, along with item 12B, and also item 13, there's a change to include the correct name of the company, which is Hughes Fire Equipment, and also on item 21 minutes, there's a changes to, one of the points was made by a council member, so in the motion, we want to reflect those changes. And with that, we also want to move up item number 30, and I'll look to Councilman Taylor for comments on that.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, I move to approve, as two regular members of the Public Facilities Municipal Property Corporation with a term beginning January 2nd, 2020, and ending January 1st, 2023, the names Shane Cook and Ken Starks.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Please vote. That passes with a 6-0 vote. Thank you. Agenda item number 11. I pulled that one because I would like to recognize the individual that is now going to become one of our judges. So, Allison, and if I can have the entire team come up to the front. This has been a, don't go away from me, I'm going to come up here in the front. We have had some significant changes in our court with our leadership, and we have our presiding judge, Judge David Kutchin, and then we added a new team member. With that, I'm going to turn this mic over to presiding judge, Judge Kutchin.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Well, we are, we're thrilled to have Judge Ferrante come on board. As indicated, it's been a long process. We've been short-staffed in the courthouse since February, and so we're, me and my colleagues are thrilled to have her to help pull the load, and we're just excited because she's a phenomenal individual. We got to know her during the interview process, and she's got some strong ties to Gilbert. She lives in Gilbert. She's worked for the town for many years before she went over to prosecute cases in Mesa, so we're thrilled beyond belief to have her back, and we're grateful that we've gotten to this point finally.
Well, we'll forgive you for going to Mesa for that short sabbatical, I think, but I know the Mesa team will be sad to see you leave. But you also have a wonderful cause that I would love for you to share with the public, and I'm just impressed and very amazed. Could you please share a little bit about that cause that you are so passionate about?
Sure. So my big passion is dealing with animal cruelty cases, and in my, dealing with those cases, I've learned a lot about the link between animal cruelty and domestic violence, and so I've done a lot of work in educating the public and police officers and other prosecutors on that link and how to ensure that there's proper investigations and prosecutions to protect victims of domestic violence. So it's been a huge passion of mine, and volunteering for animal organizations, Friends for Life, and Vice Mayor Cook judges at our Barktober Fest, so kind of, that's the fun part of my animal passion, but that's been my big goal, is to prevent domestic violence.
Well, thank you, and again, that is a big passion for this council on, with our endeavor program, ending domestic violence responsibly, and we look forward to having you be part of that team. But I shouldn't say that yet because we have to still vote and approve of this, but again, thank you and congratulations.
I'm a little concerned about the company she's keeping back there.
Vice Mayor Cook, are you ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve item 11, which is the contract for Judge Ferrante.
Second.
Please vote. That passes with a 6-0 vote. Allison, congratulations. She'll be Judge Ferrante, no, not yet, because we haven't sworn her in yet. That comes later, so again, thank you for returning back to the team. I know the team that's next to you, fantastic, so again, thank you. Congratulations. Let us now move to the public hearing. Councilmember Ray, were there any one that wanted to have any special discussions on any of the public hearing?
We have a comment for item number 27, and I'll give a personal comment for a few of the other ones. We've got some exciting things coming to Gilbert, and I recommend people take a peek at some of these places. They're going to be fun.
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor, if I could make a comment on 27 as well?
Okay, so what we'll do here, I'll open the public hearing for agenda items 22, 23, 24, 25, and 26, and close the public hearing on agenda items 22, 23, 24, 25, and 26, and entertain a motion.
I move to approve those items.
Second.
Please vote. That passes with a 6-0 vote. I will open agenda item 27. Would you like a?
Comment.
Okay. Do we not want any presentation? We're all good? Okay, so let's have public comment, yes.
We have one request to speak card. This is by Kathy Tilke, from the President of the Gilbert Chamber, who has asked not to speak but is indicating their position of being in favor of this item.
Thank you. Any of the council members that would like to speak on this agenda item? Yes, Councilmember Taylor.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor's not here tonight, but I wanted to thank you for the assignment to work on this, and I think the process was very helpful in getting a lot of good input. What we have tonight, just talking to staff earlier, is exactly what we presented in the last time. I know we've gotten emails on some additional requests, and so what I thought we would do is just consistent with what we've had in the past. I'd love it if I could extend the motion tonight to approve this, but if the council wants to have the subcommittee continue, happy to continue to serve there or happy for somebody else to do it, but I'll just continue to work with the residents that are sending us emails and with staff as appropriate to bring forward changes to these ordinances, just like we have on a regular basis from staff whenever they see an opportunity to improve. So just wanted to communicate that, because I know we've been getting a couple of follow-up emails after the last presentation, but this reflects it at that point, but I think it's important to just kind of freeze it, let's take ground on what we have, which is what reflected here tonight, and then we'll just continue to improve.
Would you think that you want to meet quarterly or meet every six months? What was your thought of the frequency of meeting with the subcommittee?
Right now, I don't know that we need to continue that subcommittee. I'm just saying it, we would, yeah, as needed, we could disband it, but I'm not sure what the procedural direction is to end that, and then we could just work one off with constituents like we do in any process, but I think we, I don't know that we need to have it continue at this point.
Our town attorney, Chris, what's your comments or legal advice for us as it relates to the subcommittee? I guess the question would be, after we approve this particular agenda item, does the subcommittee automatically terminate? Is that what the intent was from the original?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Cook, the subcommittee was created for the sole purpose of looking at this, so it would be disbanded, and then if council decides to reform the subcommittee at can.
At a future date, okay.
No formal action is needed.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the members of this committee and the team, the staff team that worked on it, and all of our residents that got involved in this, because I know it was a heavy load. We're handling the LDC update, and we kind of split both documents between the council members, and I just appreciate all of the time that you've all put in, and with the presentation that was done at our last meeting, I'm very comfortable with everything that you've done, and I just wanted to express that to all of you.
Yes, great thanks for your team's efforts. Councilmember Anderson.
Just very quickly, I too want to thank especially Larry Taylor for the work that he did on this. I've watched through the years, the evolution of our codes, particularly the building codes, and I know the reputation that Gilbert had years ago, and that has changed entirely thanks to the efforts of the staff, and I truly appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Yeah, and I'll just want to add, once the subcommittee is disbanded, nothing precludes from Larry and his team from revisiting some of these issues or making ongoing changes, so great work to everybody, and yeah, thank you to Larry and his team.
Well, thank you. I close the public hearing, agenda item number 27, and look for a motion.
Vice Mayor, I move to approve item 27 as published in the public documents before us. Second.
Please vote. That passes with a 6-0 vote. Thank you. Again, thank you, Team Gilbert, for all your efforts in this. That takes us now to the administrative items. That brings us to agenda item 28, which is a presentation on the left-turn aero conversion results. Jessica?
Yes.
If you can please bring your team, or maybe you're doing this solo, I don't know.
No way.
But we look forward to this, we look forward to your presentation.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of council. I'm here just to give a quick intro to our two presenters on this topic tonight. The town contracted with a third-party engineering firm, Jamie Blakeman with Lukahi Engineering and with Scott Kelly with Greenlight Traffic Engineering, to complete a data analysis on our lagging-to-leading left-turn aero conversion that happened in the fall of 2017. Jamie will be giving kind of a brief overview of the history of the conversion and the different touchpoints we've had with council, and then Scott will be presenting the findings of the data analysis that was completed. So with that, I will turn it over to Jamie.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Cook and council members. Thank you for having us here this evening. We are really excited to share with you the analysis that we've been working on over the last few months on your left-turn conversion. So I'm going to walk you through a little bit of history. Prior to 2004, the town had leading left turns, meaning the left turns at the signalized intersections came up first, followed by the through movements. In 2004, direction was given to convert that to lagging lefts. Lagging lefts would be the through movements go first, followed by the left-turn movements. So that said, the town operated with lagging left turns for quite a bit of time, so actually 13 years. So jump forward 13 years later, in 2017, you started to consider the idea of converting that back to leading left turns. So at the May 18, 2017 study council session, there was a presentation that was done, which looked into, to see if converting to leading lefts would be something to consider further. So as part of this presentation, the corridor of Cooper Road from Baseline to Warner Road, that had already been converted. That was converted back in May of 2016 as part of an effort with the City of Chandler as a joint effort to create progression between the two municipalities. So that said, there was some data already that we could present on, and so we looked at the, before, the travel time when it was lagging, and then we also looked at now at the conversion of it leading. So that was presented, and at the time, it showed an 11% reduction in your travel time, which is a good thing. Reduction is a good thing because now you're progressing faster to the corridor. At that same council session, they also looked at safety. One of the intersections that had also had been converted at the time was Chandler Heights Road and Higley Road. That was converted due to some concerns with safety at this intersection, so we, so at that council session, there was only three months, it had only been converted three months prior. So that said, there was only three months of crash data to look at with the conversion, and so to compare apples to apples, we only looked at three months before, three months after. Now, mind you, when it comes to data, the more data is, we prefer to have more data because you have more consistent measures, but given the fact that we only had three months, we only looked at those three. When I say "we," it's the town, it wasn't me personally. So that said, they did see that there was a reduction in crashes. So following that, a few months later, so in August of 2017, there was another presentation made. So this was using a model that we use in the traffic engineering industry nationwide. It's called Syncro, and this model is where we put in inputs into our model to get, it was, it's the best way for us to understand what happens when we modify intersections, when we change the geometrics, when we look at future volumes, when we also consider what happens when this new development comes into place, what might happen at this intersection. So it's the best tool that we have for projecting what's going to happen and predicting what might happen. That said, the Syncro analysis showed that converting from lagging to leading lefts would result in better operations through the intersections. So in 2017, at that council session, it was determined and approved to move forward where the town of Gilbert was going to be predominantly a leading left-turn municipality. So when I say predominantly, we don't like to say all of the intersections are going to be leading lefts because we always have to have flexibility like anything in life, but that's going to be the direction you're going to choose the majority of your intersections to operate. So that said, in October, that was in August, within the next few months, all of your intersections switched over to leading lefts, lefts coming up first before through movements. So now that brings us to today. So it's been about two years since your town ride conversion, and so we were tasked with looking at what has this done for the town in terms of safety and in terms of efficiency. So we dug into your data and looked to see what this really means. So we selected three corridors to look at. Each of these corridors were three miles long, so the same distance, and they were north-south, and the reason why we picked north-south corridors is because we have seen your traffic patterns, like your morning peak hour tends to move north, and your southbound tends to move south, so we felt that these were very good corridors to look at. We separated them by a few miles so that we're getting a good cross-section of what's happening in your town. So the first segment was Cooper Road from Baseline Road to Warner Road. The second segment was Val Vista Drive from Elliott Road to Williamsville Road, and the last one was Higley Road from Baseline Road to Warner Road. That said, That said, I'm going to bring up Scott and he's going to go through what we found out.
Thank you, Jamie. So in terms of the way we performed our analysis, I'll run through the data sources that we used and the corridor analyses, how we use data-driven safety analysis and data-driven operational analysis for our findings. So our main goals were to use a real-world dataset to look at the before and after travel times. And we analyzed the period before and a period after the conversion from lagging to leading lefts. And we did that for looking at the intersection crashes along the corridor and the travel time along each one of those three-mile corridors. In terms of the crash data source, we used a dot central crash database. It has all of the town's crash data uploaded to that, as well as any other agencies that may have responded to a crash and done the report. That would be within this crash dataset. So it's for the entire state. That's the central depot of crash data. And for travel time, we use the Enrix tool. It's a location-based service that uses probe data, apps on your phone, GPS navigational devices to figure out where cars are at on your roadway corridors in space and time to help you analyze the various corridors and various metrics for determining congestion and travel times. So the first corridor we want to report on would be the Higley Road from Baseline to Warner, three miles. The before travel time, the before dataset was from 2016 to 2017. This corridor was converted in September, on September 20, 2017. We have a little space on the timeline to allow drivers to adapt to that before we analyze our after period and that'll be consistent theme on each one of these corridors. In terms of the intersection crashes on the corridors, the before period and after period, we saw a 7.2% reduction in intersection crashes. This slide is a little more difficult to look at. We have directional, northbound and southbound. The lighter blue in the background is the before travel time. The darker blue in the front is the after travel time. So when the after bar is shorter than the before bar, we had a reduction in travel time. And that happened in both cases. And then this is just for the AM peak travel time. And a similar result on the PM peak travel time, where we had a slight reduction in travel times for both northbound and southbound. Next corridor is Val Vista, Elliott to Williamsfield. Again, the before and after periods, basically a year of before data and a year of after data. We have the conversion where we skipped a few months to allow drivers to adapt. Again, a similar result in terms of crash reduction from before and after. For the AM peak of Val Vista Drive, we also had reductions in travel time for both northbound and southbound. For the PM peak, we had a reduction in the southbound. In the northbound direction, we had a slight increase in travel time. The main reason we believe this is occurring is because the signals were coordinated on the corridor during 2018. Occasionally, when traffic signal corridors are coordinated, the peak direction of travel is favored. So for the southbound direction, more green time is given to vehicles traveling southbound in the PM to help progress more traffic quicker through the corridor. And sometimes that's the expense of the non-peak direction. So that's why we believe we had a slight increase in the PM peak. The next corridor is Cooper Road. On this timeline, we had two years of before and after data that we looked at. In particular, I put up here, there was a construction project happening in this corridor. So we analyzed this two ways. I'll go through with and without the construction projects. So with would be the two years before and after. So again, we still had a decrease in intersection crashes along the corridor. But with the construction project, we saw increases in travel time, which is to be expected with traffic control, construction activities and so forth on both the AM and PM peak hour. The second analysis shows us skipping over the construction period, where we had a shorter timeframe in the before and a similar timeframe in the after. However, those are further apart. And as you might expect, when you're not including the construction, we saw reductions in the travel time in both directions, northbound and southbound, for the AM and the PM peak hour. Transitioning into a slightly different topic that we analyzed for the town is what's called a traffic signal optimization program. T-SOP projects are done in order to look at signal timing along corridor. It tends to degrade over time as traffic changes, travel patterns change, development occurs. Traffic signal timing, it's good to look at it every one to three years. So with Traffic Signal Optimization Project or T-SOP projects, their goal is to look at all the signal timing and to, with the goal of reducing travel time and delay on the corridor. They can either be completed by in-house resources with your staff or sometimes outside consultants are used to these, to do these types of projects. Terms of what the town has used in the past would be the Maricopa Association of Governments, which is our regional planning agency for Maricopa County. They have a set aside of $300,000 a year for member agencies to submit grant applications to get funding to do these T-SOP projects. MAG assigns those on-call, those projects that are selected to on-call consultants to complete the projects. In this past round of funding, the town of Gilbert was actually awarded three T-SOP projects. Have those listed up here, the Higley, Warner to Queen Creek, Val Vista Drive, Queen Creek to Elliott and Williamsfield Road, Gilbert to Recker. So one of these projects, the Val Vista project, part of the corridor that we analyzed as part of our own analysis fell within the T-SOP project for Val Vista Drive, covered three miles of the six-mile T-SOP project. So we took a look at what the before and after looked like for that particular T-SOP project. So in 2018, we wanted to look at the summer months and compare that to the after period of the summer months in 2019. The T-SOP was recently implemented in roughly May of this year. And with that T-SOP project, we saw a 3% reduction in southbound travel times and a 9% reduction in northbound travel times. And for the AM and for the PM, a 1% increase. And then similar to what I had mentioned previously on the Val Vista corridor, sometimes when you do T-SOP projects, when you're progressing the heavy direction, the non-peak flows tend to degrade a little bit at the, at the expense of that. The other thing that we took a look at was an economic analysis that went along with this T-SOP. This again was for only three miles of the six-mile corridor. We looked at two factors, the travel time savings for motorists within the city and the safety benefit that is included with the reduction of crashes. So the way to think of a benefit-cost analysis is basically what is our return on investment? The money that was spent, the staff resources that were spent on doing a T-SOP project compared to the benefit that we gained economically for the town. And when you do the math and annualize it, come out with a benefit-cost ratio of 113 to 1.
So this is just to summarize everything. So benefit-cost ratio of 113 to 1, just going back to that slide, I want to emphasize this. So when you put money into something, you'd want to at least get your money back. So that's a one-to-one ratio that you want. So here, you are receiving 113 to 1, huge. So just in summary, some of the other points we want to make. Just, again, we're just focusing on this Val Vista corridor that's three miles long. What we have found with that implementation of the lagging as well as, implementation of the leading as well as the T-SOP project combined, we have seen a reduction of nine crashes per year. Great safety data. And now in terms of efficiency, we totaled all of these and all your drivers and all the delays that they're experiencing. And what we, we found is that this is a time savings on just three miles through Gilbert of 1,800 hours per year. So now diving down to just what does this mean to me, 1,800 hours? If you're a commuter who's traveled along this three-mile segment, northbound towards the freeway and southbound at the end of your workday, at the end of the year, you've saved two hours. So I just wanted to point out all these happy people because they're traveling along this three-mile segment and they get to work faster and they get to their gym faster and they go get to take their kids faster. So very happy people. Again, happy people here. So thumbs up. So what we have found is that safety has increased. And that's not surprising as research shows that 68% of crashes, angle crashes, are reduced at intersections with the conversion of leading to lagging. And also research shows that with the, we talked about the T-SOP, that's coordinating between signals. So putting that effort layered on top of that conversion is shown to reduce crashes by 21%. So safety was definitely increased and travel times were reduced. So that said.
Did you mean from lagging to leading?
From lagging to leading.
Because you're, because I was, I was going to get really, really happy if you were going to say, oh, from leading to lagging. But you meant really from lagging to leading.
Okay, yes, sorry.
Okay.
So that said, those are our two main points that we got out of this. And Scott and I are more than happy to answer any questions you have. We boiled this down to a pretty simple PowerPoint, but believe me, there's a lot of data that goes on behind the scenes and there's even, we've even done some Syncro analysis. So we talked about the modeling. Modeling efforts went into this as well, but we felt presenting you with real data was much more valuable than model data. But yet, models have purposes in scenarios where we don't know the future. So a lot went into this. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have and hopefully we have the answer.
Well, thank you. This council loves data. We're data-driven. And your presentation was fantastic. I would like to open this up to the rest of the council for comment. I know that this team is split with this, but let's have an opportunity to discuss. Councilmember Taylor?
Vice Mayor, thanks. And thank you both for the presentation. Enjoyed that. The, so a couple, a couple of things. Glad you focused on the things that matter to me, efficiency and safety. Safety was a big, big issue for me. So as fellow data wonks, you know there's a difference between causal and correlation, right? So correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like you're really presenting correlative data. So how do we know that it's causal besides you're just comparing those two, right? I mean, there's different circumstances, right? So what are the causal factors that you think, or that went into your data sets here and comparisons rather than correlation data that seems to be what was presented?
So the, the causal data is always a little more difficult to get at and that's one of the reasons that you want to model it, model it so that you can control those variables. So when you're looking at just the raw data, it's a multivariate analysis. So there's a lot of other factors that are going on. So it's very difficult to control for those. In terms of the safety research, those values are controlled for. The safety data that we used is again, only one year before and after typically. You really want to have at least three to five to try and control for those variables. And there's some different statistical methods to really get down to whether or not there was a safety benefit or if it's just noise. But generally, what we're seeing is kind of reflective of what we see in the research. But getting at the causative factors is again, very challenging.
Yeah, thank you and I appreciate that. And I've done enough stats to know that, I mean, that is a challenge, right? But I hope that, you know, we have the happy and the crash heuristics going on here. So, you know, people should know that just because the same data sets sort of imply something, it doesn't mean that there's a causal relationship between the two because the causal relationship hasn't been empirically proven. What we're saying is that these two things happened to be at the same time. So that's, that's one thing. And then the other thing is, you know, some of the data sets were measuring this traffic flow at the same time period. There were others that weren't. And I, I think I just want to have a follow-up conversation to learn a little bit more because I think it's fair to measure and draw some conclusions like we have here with happy families and pictures and high five, right? When you're measuring at least the same timeframes, whereas in that one, that was the construction. I think that we were measuring some summer hours versus some school hours. And maybe you adjusted for that. But you're naturally going to see more efficiency in the summertime because people want to get out of here. It's too hot. And so you're going to have less traffic on there. And I don't, I don't know if you want to speak to that or not, but that's certainly one observation here.
Yep. I, so first of all, I just want to say I agree with your causal argument on that. And it's very hard to tie the crashes to that. But speaking on this, we, we tried very hard to make sure we were capturing like an equal to equal before and after. So if you notice, what we looked at was a whole year of data. So it did include like summer months, winter months on the before data. And it was to the day, a year following as well. So the data sets before and after were exactly the same. So even in that situation with Val Vista, when we were trying to evaluate T-SOP, we didn't have a full year of data. So what we did, so we were comparing apples to apples as best as possible. We had, both had summer months was what we had. So we have before data with summer months and after data with summer months. So we did try very hard to control that data and, and didn't vary on the time of year.
It looked like, we can go back to the slide that I was, want to go back a couple of.
Maybe like this?
That one there, yeah.
That was the summer one?
No, maybe it was another one. It was the one that went from like April to September.
This one? So, so if you look at the before data, it was September to August and it was for a full year, from September 1st to August 31st.
Yeah, okay, I see. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we ignored the whole construction period.
Right, good.
And the challenge, so it's, it's off by a month. And that's because when we did the analysis, we weren't quite far enough into October to get that last month.
Good. I think, thank you for that clarification. Just last point, Vice Mayor, is the other observation, regardless of the causal issue, the fact is your, the after effect probably has more volume just because our town's growing and we have more traffic. So to see these decreases with higher volume, I'm making an assumption here, but we know the town's growing, I think actually speaks a little bit stronger to the case you guys are making about, you know, the left-hand turn. Anyways, again, appreciate, I would, Patrick, I would love to have the information of the team and a way to follow up to just ask more information, you know, late, after this, if that's possible.
Any other comments from the council members?
I do know that at this intersection, which is near my home, the traffic flow does improve tremendously at that intersection. So I know a lot of the, I know during the construction time, a lot of folks did not want to travel on that road. I mean, they went over to McQueen quite a bit. But I know when the construction was over, a lot of folks migrated back over. And I know that that was, you know, a lot of great traffic flow through that intersection. So I could see how the numbers could have gone up as well because of that, because everyone shifted their behavior going up on Cooper.
Does it sound like we should probably digest this information as a council? Spend a little bit of time, Patrick, I don't know, we look at a couple of months of us kind of going through this, maybe having some internal meetings to then maybe decide what we like to do with the data?
Vice Mayor Cook, councilmembers, we're happy to have additional dialogues with you if you'd like to sit down with the team members and talk it through a little bit better to understand it.
Yeah.
That'd be fine.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
For going through the data. Thank you, Jessica, for the team and appreciate the information. That takes us to Agenda Item 29, which is the consideration acceptance of the budget report. Are there any council members that like to see a presentation? Or do we, can we just move forward?
Do we need to vote on this, Chris? I move to accept it.
Second. All right, please vote. That passes with a six-zero vote. That leads us to Agenda Item 31, the consideration of activation of the Citizens Transportation Task Force. Do we need a presentation for the council?
We need a little bit more information. I'm, how many people are we looking at?
Was that going to be led by staff?
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Cook, Councilmember Peterson, yeah. So what we've done is broken the town down into nine quadrants so we get equal representation for interest from our established areas, our areas that are still expanding, experiencing growth and new, new infrastructure needs to come together and give us some, some feedback and input and guidance as we develop the capital program for the streets bond package for next fall.
I think Lisa has already received some names in those quadrants.
You have 35 names already?
Yeah.
Is there going to be some distinctions made between people that are more into vehicular versus bicycles? I've gotten a couple of calls from people that would love to have input from the bicycle community as an example.
Vice Mayor Cook, Councilmember Taylor, yes. So there will be a very robust process for outreach and presentation of information and solicitation of input from our residents, even ones that aren't serving on this committee in regards to the
in regards to the composition of the committee itself. The only guidelines that we established is one person from each one of the quadrants. The makeup and composition and background and interest of those individuals are certainly within your purview.
And Vice Mayor, just to follow up, like the micro-mobility community, would we see them more as a stakeholder that would present to this? Or would you see them as someone that would be seated potentially on this? Or what, how do you see them interfacing here?
Sure. So again, for the committee itself, I'm not sure who has put in for it. If there are people who have specific interests in those areas, you could certainly point them to this group. In regards to soliciting input for this in general, we will be doing a lot of citizen engagement to get the interest from the residents in regards to things that they like to see or concerns they may have within our community that they'd like to see addressed. We'll make sure there's some specific information in there so people, for that micro-mobility active transportation community can give us a lot of guidance as well as what they'd like to see.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
So nine districts you've broken the town into, does that mean you're looking at nine members?
That would be...
One per district?
That would be correct.
Okay. And you have 35 applicants, Lisa, that you said. And so who will be going through those applicants to pick the nine people? That's what, I'm curious.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Cook, Councilmember Peterson, that would be the council's purview to go through those and then select those individuals.
Basically, like a subcommittee, not a subcommittee, but one of our boards and commissions. And we would probably go through that interview process. I'm assuming that's how we would do that?
That's correct.
Lisa, is that how we would? You want us to have that discussion right now?
Right now? It's probably the time, correct?
All right, well, let's have that discussion. So we'll have a new board and commission. That would be considered the Citizens Transportation Task Force. With that commission, there will be members of our community that will apply. Typically, we have, our largest commission is the planning and zoning that has, how many members, Bridgette?
Seven full members, two alternates, so nine technically. Oh, Parks Department has nine.
Parks have nine, so...
Do they have nine or seven? Okay.
So if we have nine districts, sounds like we want to have nine members. Everyone agree with that?
That makes sense.
All right, we'll have nine members of the board. Council liaison, I think Councilmember...
Anderson.
Anderson would like to be assigned to that. Would we stagger the, or is it a one-year? Okay.
Yes, that's correct. The intention would be it would serve through November, next November's election, and we will establish the date for the first meeting and then the schedule over the period of time.
Okay. And would that be staffed by Jessica's team on Public Works? Who have a liaison from the stand?
Yeah, we've actually got a rather large team of people that are working on this, but we'll let you know who their staff point person will be and who will handle their affairs.
And how often do we want to meet, have this board meet?
We're going to determine that, Vice Mayor Cook, at this point, probably no less than once a month.
A month, okay.
Maybe a little bit more often than at the beginning.
Yeah.
Out of the 35 applicants, did you get at least one from every district that we want to cover? Okay, that's good, that's a good start. Yeah, I would imagine with 35, we have multiples in some districts so that we'd have to make a decision based on that. So I wonder if we have them, like we do a typical board or commission, maybe have the clerk's office break them down by district, and then we rank them by district? And then we maybe interview a couple per district? Perhaps?
Well, we probably want to start this task force fairly soon, like within maybe the next 60 days.
So do we just want to rank them?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Cook, Councilmember Peterson, our intention would be to have the first meeting sometime in the second, third week of December at the latest.
Okay, all right. Do we have, we'll call, I don't know, a job description or a statement of level of effort for this task force? Has that been published?
Vice Mayor Cook, we have given a general description of the duties of the task force. We are working on right now finalizing what that schedule looks like, as I mentioned, as well as further clarification on roles and expectations for the members.
How about if we do what we were talking about earlier with the MPC, is that we all rank them as a group, and then we give the top couple to their liaison, Councilmember Anderson, and let him make the choice? Does that make sense? To get it going faster?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Instead of having to do interviews and, yeah.
Okay, I'm good with that. Do you have enough direction?
Yep.
With that? All right, so we do need to activate the motion of this task force, so I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to activate the board as we just discussed this evening.
Okay. All those, please vote. That passes with a 6-0 vote. Hey, this night's been fantastic, 6-0. Oh, I like that. All right, let's move to Agenda Item 32, boards and commissions and committees. Do we have any council members that would like to give us an update? Okay, no update. Future meeting agenda items. Lisa, I do have a new agenda item that we'd like to add. Communications from our town manager.
Vice Mayor Cook, members of the council, thank you. A couple of things. Tonight first, I want to start with a big thank you to the Parks and CIP teams. We had the wonderful opening of Desert Sky Park last night, and Robert Carmona and his staff, as well as Susanna Struble and Rook Hooker on her team just did an excellent job bringing that project in on budget and on schedule, and another wonderful amenity for the community. I sent you an email earlier this week. We got notification by the Insurance Services Office and their Public Protection Classification Program, which measures fire protection capabilities of cities. And we receive a 1 through 10 ranking, 1 being the highest. And historically, we get reviewed every five years. In 1990, we started out at a 5, moved up to a 4 by 2004, a 2 in 2014. I'm proud to say that we just received notification that we have received the highest ranking of a 1. There's over 40,000 communities that receive this review and ranking. Only 348 of those cities have a number one rating, placing us in the top percent of those communities that have a number one and are also have accredited fire departments. That's only 85. So it's been great work by our fire team, as well as several other departments. Our water resources team played a part in that, as well as our Public Works team who helps maintain those hydrants around the community. So a lot of insurance companies use that rating to set homeowner policy rates, so that should be a great thing for our residents and our businesses who have insurers who do, use that as part of their evaluation process, and they should see that reflected in their premiums. I will add on to the recognition we gave to Larry Taylor. You gave to Larry Taylor earlier. He did a great job in guiding us through that 2018 building code adoption process, and we very much value Larry and everything he does for the town. Want to recognize the IT team, especially Jason Thompson, Eugene Mahia, and Sasan Priti, P to Z. I'm going to leave it at P to Z. I almost tried to say it there.
You are going to pronounce that right.
Prithasati?
Yes.
They're close. Is he in the audience? We opened our new Gilbert Tech Hub, which is our customer service center for IT to be more responsive to the needs of the organization and workforce, because technology is and becomes a bigger part of how we deliver services every day in Gilbert. So that's been a nice addition. And then lastly, I want to thank Eric Braun and Gretchen Baumgartner for their work on the agreement with SRP for the renewable energy for our use in town facilities. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Report from council members. Yes, Councilmember Peterson?
Vice Mayor, we had a wonderful veterans' celebration today out here on the lawn, and I often get asked why we celebrate our veterans on a day other than Veterans Day. And it really, for me, definitely boils down to the fact that our schools are involved. And the work that those students, whether they're ROTC students, or they're chorus students, or band students that are here to be part of the process, they're the reason that we do this, to make sure that they have an opportunity to recognize our veterans and to be part of this great event every single year. So I just wanted to thank our staff. Our Parks Department has been crazy staffed lately with two big park openings, and then we had that park opening last night, and then they had this big event today here on the lawn. So I just give them a lot of credit for everything that they do. And I'm thankful to all of our veterans here at the town that work as employees, and anybody that has served that is a member of this community. And thank you all for your service. And if you haven't attended this event, please come out next year because it's amazing.
Thank you. Report from the mayor. I will take that on for just a moment. We have a wonderful gift to one of our council members. To my right, Councilmember Ray's birthday was this last Sunday. That box is really heavy, and I believe it's...
50?
He's not 50 yet.
50, 60? Old man down there.
But anyways, I think he'll be glad to share that with a lot of us. So again, happy birthday, Councilmember Ray. Hopefully, it's chocolate chip cookies.
It's cookies for everybody.
Cookies for everybody with that. I just want to make an announcement that our Gilbert Days Parade is on November 23rd, which is a couple Saturdays from now. It's going to be extremely well-attended with lots of entries. In fact, this is the most entries that we've had ever for the parade. So we invite all the families to come down on Saturday the 23rd to enjoy the festivities with that. Councilmember Ray, does it taste good?
I think Councilwoman Yentes would be a better person to ask right now.
That was her dinner?
Bless you. Happy birthday.
But happy birthday. With that, I would like to recess, regular meeting, and reconvene in executive session for all those that attend. Thank you for coming.